San Antonio, Texas. Let us pray. Thank you, our Father in heaven, that your word can be of tremendous strength and guidance to those of us who believe. As we continue with our study of Abraham and Sarah tonight, we pray you will give us understanding and insight, enlighten us and show us those things that we need to know and do in order to live our lives to please you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Today, we are studying Genesis chapters fifteen and sixteen. Genesis fifteen and sixteen. God's covenant with Abraham, and then later on, Heger and Ishmael. In Genesis, chapter twelve, verse two, God promised that Abraham would be the father of a great nation. In Genesis thirteen, verse sixteen, God assured him that his descendants would be as the dust of the earth. That is, his descendants would be innumerable, and that they will inherit the land of Canaan. Abraham had experienced God's presence and power. He had just fought a battle and won. But the promised child had not yet come. Both Adam and his wife Sarah were growing old, and Sarah remained barren. In chapter fifteen, God repeats his promise to Abraham and met his doubts with reassurance. So I'm going to read the whole of chapter fifteen now. After these things, the word of the Lord came to Abraham in a vision, saying, "Do not be afraid, Abra- Abraham. I am your shield, your exceedingly great reward." But Abraham said, "Lord God, what will you give me, seeing I go childless? And the heir of my house is Eliazer of Damascus?" Then Abraham said, "Look, you have given me no offspring. Indeed, one born in my house is my heir." And behold, the word of the Lord came to him, saying, "This one shall not be your heir, but one who will come from your own body shall be your heir." Then he brought him outside and said, "Look now towards heaven and count the stars, if you are able to number them." And he said to him, "So shall your descendants be." And he believed in the Lord, and he accounted it to him for righteousness. Then he said to him, "I am the Lord who brought you out of Ur of the Chaldeans to give you this land, to inherit it." And he said, "Lord God, how shall I know that I will inherit it?" So he said to him, "Bring me a three-year-old hypha, a three-year-old female goat, a three-year-old ram, a turtle dove, and a young pigeon." Then he brought all these to him and cut them in two, down the middle, and he 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 brought all of them to him, cut them in two, down the middle, and placed each piece opposite the other. But he did not cut the birds in two. And when the vultures came down on the carcasses, Abraham drove them away. Now, when the sun was going down, a deep sleep fell upon Abraham. And behold, horror and great darkness fell upon him. Then he said to Abraham, "Know certainly that your descendants will be strangers in a land that is not theirs, and we serve them, and they will afflict them for hundred years. And also the nation whom they serve, I will judge. Afterward, they shall come out with great possessions. Now, as for you, you shall go to your fathers in peace. You shall be buried at a good old age. But in the fourth generation, they shall return here, for the iniquity of the Amorites is not yet complete. And it came to us, when the sun went down and it was dark, that behold, there appeared a smoking oven and a burning torch that passed between those pieces. On the same day, the Lord made a covenant with Abraham, saying, "To your deferred descendants, I will give this land from the river of Egypt to the great river, the river Euphrates, the Canaanites, the Canizites, the Cardboneites, the Hittites, the Perizzites, the Rechim, the Amorites, the Canaanites, the Giga-Shites, and the Jebusites." Verse one of this chapter starts with, "After these things, the Lord came to Abraham in a vision." After what things? After Abraham had defeated a powerful alliance of four kings to rescue Lot's nephew. After Abraham had been met by Machizeadek, the king of Salem, and the king of Sodom. God said to Abraham, "Do not be afraid. I am your shield and your exceedingly great reward." God is all-knowing. He knew that Abraham was afraid. Otherwise, he would not have told him not to be afraid. But what could be responsible for Abraham's fear? Excuse me. Abraham had just defeated four kings in order to re- rescue Lot. What if those kings retaliated? In any case, the all-knowing God knew why Abraham was afraid and gave him the antidote for his fear. He told him, "I am your shield," meaning, "I will protect you." The Bible refers to God as our shield in several passages in the Bible. Psalm eighteen says, Psalm eighteen, verse thirty, says, "As for God, his way is perfect. The word of the Lord is proven. He is a shield to those who trust in him." No wonder David says in Psalm fifty-six, verse three, Psalm fifty-six, verse three, "Whenever I am afraid, I will trust in you." God does not want us to be afraid. Thus, it is no surprise, excuse me, that the statement, "Fear not or do not be afraid," occurs again and again in the scripture. My favorite one is God's promise to, of his protection in Isaiah forty-three, verses one and two. Isaiah forty-three, verses one and two. "But now thus says the Lord, who created you, Jacob, and he who formed you, O Israel, fear not, for I have redeemed you. I have called you by my name; you are mine. When you pass through the waters, I will be with you, and through the rivers they shall not overflow you. When you walk through the fire, you shall not be burnt, nor shall the flame scorch you." As long as we are, we, his children, are sure of God's presence with us, we did not be afraid of anything or anyone else. Another important thing that God revealed to Abraham is found in his statement, "I am your exceedingly great reward." It was as if God was telling Abraham that he approved of his refusal to take any reward from the king of Sodom. It will be recalled that the king of Sodom had asked Abraham to take all the spoils of the war that he had just won against the four kings. But Abraham was not going to let the king of Sodom take the glory due to God for making him rich. Abraham chose his relationship with God over earthly riches as the best reward anyone could ask for. And here, we have God confirming it. Psalm two thirty-seven, verse four, says, "Delight yourself also in the Lord, and he will give you the desires of your heart." In verse two, Abraham expressed his concern about his childlessness. Many years had passed since God promised Abraham and Sarah a son. Would he ever have a son? Abraham wondered. Wasn't it becoming more likely that Eliazer of Damascus, his servant, would be his heir? As it was a common cultural practice for a man who was childless. But God assured him that Eliazer would not be his heir, but his own son, who was yet to be born even in his old age. And to expand the promise, God took Abraham outside and asked him to look up and count the stars if he could. Of course, Abraham could not count the stars. No one can count the stars. Only God can count the stars. "So shall your descendants be," God told him. God was telling Abraham that his descendants would be innumerable. In verse six, "And he believed in the Lord, and he accounted it to him for righteousness." NIV version says, "Abraham believed the Lord, and he credited it to him as righteousness." And the New Living Translation says, "And Abraham believed the Lord, and the Lord counted him as righteous because of his faith." What does this mean? It means that God considered Abraham righteous because he believed that God would make good his promise that he had just given him again. Because of his faith, God considered him as being of right standing with him. It is faith in the only living God that saves the sinner from sin. No one can be saved by works or good deeds, only by faith. God saves us by his grace through our faith. For by grace you have been saved through faith, and that not of yourselves. It is the gift of God, not of works, lest anyone should boast. Ephesians two eight. Abraham was not saved because of righteous living or by any good works that he did. He simply believed in God, and God declared him righteous. This is all that is required of the sinner. Believe in the Lord Jesus Christ. Believe on his works that he did on the cross, and you shall be saved. This is the heart of the gospel message. In verse seven, God said to Abraham, "I am the Lord who brought you out of Ur of the Chaldeans to give you this land, to inherit it." Here, God is making a self-proclamation. He's introducing himself to Abraham in case he had not quite got it. "This is who I am," God is saying. "This is why I brought you out from your country. You can be sure I will do it." Verse eight, Abraham said to the Lord, "Lord God, how shall I know that I will inherit it?" This was not a question indicating unbelief. He was merely asking for confirmation. And God understood the purpose of the question. This was why he went on to give him a binding covenant. The covenant was a formal agreement or contract between God and Abraham. Three animals each, of which was three, each of which was three years old, a hypha, a goat, a ram, with a turtle dove, and a young pigeon. The animals were cut into halves and laid opposite each other with a path in between for the parties concerned to walk through. The birds were not cut into halves. The parties walking through was as if to say, "If any of us should break the covenant, let what has happened to these animals happen to us." Abraham waited a long time, but God did not show up. Abraham had to chase away the vultures that came down on the carcasses. At sunset, God caused a deep sleep to fall on Adam, on Abraham, as he gave him a prophecy about his descendants. God, in verses thirteen to sixteen, told Abraham, "One, his descendants will live as slaves in a strange land for four hundred years. Two, God will judge that nation." That's a reference to the ten plagues in Exodus seven to eleven, Ex- Exodus seven to eleven. Three, they will come out with great possessions. Indeed, they plundered the Egyptians when they were going. Exodus twelve, thirty-one to thirty-six. And four, Abraham will die and be buried at a ripe old age. In verse eighteen, we have details of the land that has, that God has given Abraham and his descendants to inherit. It should be noted that normally, the two parties involved in the covenant walked together through the path between the carcasses. But in this case, while Adam slept, God acted alone. It was a unilateral and unconditional, unconditional covenant. The smoking oven and a burning torch that passed through those pieces were symbols that represented the glory of the Lord. God is the executor. He is the one who created the world. He is the one who make, who can make promises and fulfill them. He is the true and faithful God, the covenant-keeping God. And that takes us to chapter sixteen. Go back to Genesis, chapter sixteen. And we're going to read about Heger and Ishmael. Now Sarah, Abraham's wife, had borne him no children, and she had an Egyptian maid-servant whose name was Heger. So Sarah said to Abraham, "See now, the Lord has restrained me from bearing children. Please go into my maid; perhaps I shall obtain children by her." And Abraham hid the voice of Sarah. Then Sarah, Abraham's wife, took Heger, her maid, the Egyptian, and gave her to her husband Abraham to be his wife, after Abraham had dwelt ten years in the land of Canaan. So he went into Heger, and she conceived. And when she saw she had conceived, her mistress became despised in her eyes. Then Sarah said to Abraham, "My wrong be upon you. I gave you my maid into your embrace, and when she saw that she has conceived, I became despised in her eyes. The Lord joyed between me, you, and me." So Abraham said to Sarah, "Indeed, your maid is in your hand. Do to her as you please." And Sarah dealt harshly with Heger, and she fled from her presence. Now the angel of the Lord found her by a spring of water in the wilderness, by the spring on the way to shore. And he said, "Heger, Sarah's maid, why, where have you come from? And where are you going?" She said, "I'm fleeing from the presence of my mistress, Sarah." The angel of the Lord said to her, "Return to your mistress and submit yourself under her hand." Then the angel of the Lord said to her, "I will multiply your descendants exceedingly, so that they shall not be counted for mul- multitude." And the angel of the Lord said to her, "Behold, you are with child, and you shall bear a son. You shall call his name Ishmael, because the Lord has heard your afflictions. He shall be a wild man; his hand shall be against every man, and every man's hand against him, and he shall dwell in the presence of all his brethren. Then she called the name of the Lord who spoke to her, 'You are the God who sees.' For she said, "Have I also here seen him who sees me?" Therefore the well was called Be'alaharoy. Observe, it is between Kadesh and Bered. So Heger bore Abraham a son, and Abraham named the son whom Heger bore, Ishmael. Heger was eighty-sixth, eh, Abraham was eighty-six years old when Heger bore Ishmael to Abraham. Earlier in chap- fif- chapter fifteen, we have seen how God confirmed his promise to give Abraham a son from his own body, and how Abraham believed, and how God counted him righteous because of his faith. In this chapter, however, we see, we have an account of how the faith of a great man of faith was challenged. Sarah as, was as concerned about their childlessness as Abraham was. In her desperation to have the promised child, she came up with this idea, which, though culturally acceptable, was certainly against God's plan. It was customary for a childless woman to have children born to her through her maid-servant. Children born in this way would then belong to her. This, however, was not how God intended to give the promised child to Abraham and Sarah. God had established marriage and family to be between one man and one woman who were to become one flesh. Genesis two, twenty-four. Sarah gave her maid to Abraham to become his wife. Unfortunately, there is no mention that Abraham and Sarah sought guidance and direction from God. Why? Why did Abraham yield to Sarah's advice? Could it be because God had told him that the promised child would be from his own body? He misinterpreted God's words to mean that the promised child did not have to be born physically by Sarah? Anyway, it appeared that they were trying to help God, as some of us do sometimes, when we are in too, we are in too much hurry for God to act. God allowed them to carry out their plan. That was God's permit, permissive will at work. Paul writes on this subject in Galatians four, three. Galatians four, twen- twenty-three. "The son of the born woman, that is, Heger, was born according to the flesh, that is, in a human attempt to bring about the fulfillment of God's promise. And he, of the free woman, the free woman is Sarah, threw the promise as God's fulfillment of his promise." Many times, when we are waiting for what God has promised us, we revert to human solutions. We stop depending on God to accomplish his plan, whichever way he wishes. We forget that Proverbs three, five to six, Proverbs three, five to six, says, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart, and lean not on your own understanding. In all your ways acknowledge him, and he shall direct your paths." After Heger became pregnant, she began to despise her mistress, and this brought conflict. In verse five, Sarah blamed Abraham for her plight. Sarah said to Abraham, "My wrong be upon you." New Living Translation says, "This is all your fault. I gave my maid into your embrace, and when she saw that she had conceived, I became despised in her eyes. The Lord joyed between you and me. And the Anunnaki says, 'The Lord will show who is wrong, you or me.'" Sarah was now attacking her husband, but the idea was hers. Abraham should have said no to Sarah's advice. He should have depended solely on God. Why Sarah should have continued to trust in God? Now she could no longer bear the hatred and lack of respect men displayed by the arrogant maid. She felt humiliated. And Abraham, failing to take res- responsibility, said to Sarah, "She is your servant; do to her as you please." So Sarah dealt harshly with Heger, and she ran away. The angel of the Lord, who, as the story of false is revealed as God himself, found her by a spring of water in the wilderness and said to her, "Heger, Sarah's maid, where are you coming from and where are you going?" Here was this pregnant girl, feeling rejected, abused, and alone in the desert. But God saw her. God saw her and intervened in her desperate situation. Oh, the mercy of God! The angel knew who she was and called her by name. Aren't you glad that God knows you? Aren't you glad that God knows your name? He knows what you are going through. He understands your situation better than anyone, and is always ready to step into your situation and give you help and hope. God gave Heger two instructions. Return to your mistress and submit to her. In verses ten to twelve, we read about God's promise to Heger in the midst of her affliction to give her hope. God promised, one, that he was going to multiply her descendants. This is similar to the one he gave to Abraham in verse, chapter fifteen, verse five. And secondly, that she was going to give birth to a son, whose name would be called Ishmael, meaning God hears, because the Lord had heard her afflictions. Oh, the grace of God! But the coming of Ishmael into Abraham's family was not without its attendant consequences. For it was create, it was to create the greatest problem in history. Ishmael's descendants are the Arabs in the Middle East today, while Israel, the Jewish people, are the descendants of Isaac, the child of promise. And hatred and hostility still persist between these two groups of people, even till today. It is assumed that Heger, Ishmael's mother, was included in the gifts that Pharaoh gave Abraham in Egypt when he lied, that is, that Sarah's wife, Sarah was his sister and not his wife. A sinful act committed instead of depending on God for their security. Now, this is another example of Abraham and Sarah's choices to, to act in a hurry instead of depending on God and waiting patiently for his own timing. We have a great lesson to learn from here. Are there situations in your life that are causing you to doubt God's plan for your life? Are you faced with temptations to take actions on issues when God is asking you to wait for his timing? Put your trust in God and wait patiently for his timing. He will never disappoint you. Let us pray. Father, we are so grateful that you are our shield and reward. Thank you that you are the God who sees us in our afflictions. Help us to know that you love us and will not let your promises for us go unfulfilled, no matter how long it takes. Give us the grace to trust you and wait for your own time so that we don't go against your plans for our lives. Increase our faith in you and in your word. We give you all the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Join us next time when we shall be studying Genesis chapters seventeen and eighteen. Genesis seventeen and eighteen. Good night.